Welcome, everybody. And we will call the meeting to order.
Yeah, we've got to make a motion in here.
Well, first of all, we need to have our roll call, if you would, please.
Ms. Dunbar? Here. Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
And for the purposes of those listening into the audio, this is the business meeting of the Board of Education on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012. Would you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? Right behind Dr. Lucas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, was that your motion, Julie? To approve the agenda? You have a motion, or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Feasel? Yes. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Our first item, wonderful opportunity here again, as we have in the past, to honor our student achievements at Olentangie Schools. It's great pleasure to have you here with us this evening, with your families. And we will begin those announcements. Mr. O'Brien will...
I'll call the roll, so to speak. So, tonight, we salute Olentangie students who are outstanding scholars and have achieved recognition in the 2013 National Merit Scholarship Program. A total of 22 students from Olentangie local schools being recognized tonight. Fifteen Olentangie students have qualified as commended students in the 2013 National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are among approximately 1.5 million high school students across the country that entered the program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. Of those entrants, approximately 50,000 high scores qualified as either commended students or semifinalists. So, let's start with our commended students. So, from Olentangie Liberty High School, so please come up and get your flag and your picture taken, is Jennifer Liu. Dominic Theodore. Harini Ishwari. So, I apologize if I missed my second. Next, seven Olentangie students have qualified as semifinalists in the 2013 National Merit Scholarship Program, giving them a chance to compete for approximately 8,300 scholarships worth more than $34 million. Semifinalists represent the highest scores in the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Olentangie students named 2013 National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists are, from Olentangie Liberty High School, Amanda Simili. From Olentangie Orange High School, Amy Lee. Okay, well, congratulations to these students, their families, and their teachers as well.
Well, of course, you're very welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
But you're also welcome.
There are no refreshments, but I'm sure you have homework, so you're obviously welcome to leave.
I emailed you the picture. Send it.
Oh, yeah. We're going to do executive session, yeah? Oh. Let's just, let's do that. We would like to go into executive session as permitted by Section 121, 22-G1 of the ORC, to consider the employment of a public employee. Do we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll, please.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. And we will be back, of course, for the rest of the agenda. And I'd like to have a motion, Becky. I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda to include, under Board Action Items, which is number 12, Item C, to approve a resolution to initiate termination of a public employee. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that amendment?
Separate from the other?
We can't. We'll get to that. We'll get to it, we can. Please, Becky.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Yes. For the Board President's Report, I'll keep this very brief in the interest of time, but we had a great session, I felt, earlier this evening at 6:00 with our first Board Community Dialogue. Learned a great lesson this evening, that with a half an hour, it'd been nice if we would've had a full hour for that. Great turnout, very good questions, and as we look forward, we do have those questions on hand that did not get addressed. We will research them and post responses, but certainly, we can bring those forward at the next occasion when we will do another public dialogue. So, we will follow up with that as quickly as we can. So, with that, Dr. Lucas, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I, too, would like to say, before we get into this superintendent's report, I thought that all of you did a very, very good job on the dialogue, some very good questions, and a great turnout. So, I think it is critical that people understand that you have knowledge of a lot of things going on in the district to have that dialogue with our constituents. So, I applaud all of you for the efforts. I also applaud our community for coming out. A tremendous number of individuals, which is very much appreciated. Several good things taking place, obviously, and one that we'll be talking about for a while, and we've already talked a little bit about preliminary report card data, now the key word here is preliminary. We'll continue to use that word preliminary, but I think for the most part, we can pretty well be assured that, again, we would be excellent with distinction. Our performance index went up once again. I think we said five or six months ago, we thought around 107.4. It is 107.3. That is the highest we've ever had. It was 106.9 last year. So, we continue to bump up. In that time, by the way, our enrollment went up approximately 800 students. I have several individuals that, we've been in that process for so long, they somewhat chuckle when people say that enrollment is going down, right? Although, just because it goes from 1,000 to 800 new students, it doesn't go down until it hits zero, and then goes down to there. So, we are still going up, we're just not going up as fast as we were in the past. We did exceed value-added. As you know, value-added is a growth measure, and basically, what it measures is a year's worth of educational value to our students. Did we add one year's worth of value to their education? And you can either meet that, you can be below that, or you can be above that. And, of course, our value-added measures will show that we exceeded, meaning, the average student that walks into the Olentangie local schools gets more than one year's worth of educational value in that process. So, that is what takes you to excellent with distinction. You have to exceed that value-added growth, and several in the area did not hit the exceed, they just met it, which is why they dropped from excellent with distinction down to excellent. But, very challenging times when you get near the top in that performance index piece because you're near the top of that ceiling, so obviously, it's harder to move. But, I think we will continue to focus in on that value-added piece because, especially for high-achieving districts, I think it's critical to understand that we're just not resting on our laurels. We are actually moving kids even further than where they were when they entered that particular year. So, it's very good to know that our teachers continue to push in the classroom on a yearly basis to add more than one year's worth of value to that education. That AYP, that's adequate yearly progress. That's meeting subgroups. I know one of the questions that came up in the dialogue was, you know, how are we doing in regard to, in that case, I think the question is the student disabilities. And, of course, there are like seven different subgroups, and you have to show that you are moving all kids in those subgroups at the same rate that you are moving your, what I will call, regular-ed students. If you are not moving those kids, you don't meet AYP. And, again, we did meet adequate yearly progress. We are getting more subgroups, qualifying more subgroups every year as our enrollment goes up, and I think that will continue to be a challenge for us, to make sure that we are addressing the needs of all subgroups, all 17,500 students that walk in our doors. And I think we need to continue to focus on this, of which we will, and I think you'll hear more about this at our annual report here in November. All 23 buildings, excellent or excellent with distinction. Just a reminder, Heritage was a kindergarten only building last year. This year, it's K5, so it will fall into that next year. So, once again, I believe, in fact, I'm almost sure, this is the first time, all buildings are either excellent or excellent with distinction, which tells us that, what we've said all along, it doesn't matter where you attend school in Olentangie, you are assured of an excellent education. The facts bear the truth in regard to that. We are the largest district in the state to earn excellent with distinction. Again, we are 17,500 and growing. That still puts us in the top 6% of the school districts in the state of Ohio. We do something that hardly anyone else does, and that's grow. And we grow at the rate that we continue to grow. And, as you know, most of the trends will show, as districts get larger, student achievement goes the other way. Our district gets larger, our student achievement goes the other way, our cost per pupil stays down. I think that's somewhat of an oddity, that people look at us sometimes and go, okay, what's going on there? And I think that will continue.
I might just add, for those listening on the audio, when you just made the statement of going the other way, that your hand gesture was up. Let's just make sure that your other way was really that it was continuing to progress, not your earlier reference, that school measures are going down.
Well, that's why that's good for the audio, so they can't see my hand gestures.
The hand gesture was...
I appreciate it.
The hand gesture was complete, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that into play. Also, I want to, the top 6% of the districts, but the bottom line here, again, is how efficient. Cost per pupil remains at 94.65 per pupil. And I think that's something that, I know this board has put a lot of emphasis on, in the fact that we want quality educational values at an efficient cost. And, now, keep in mind, this 94.65 is actually 2011 data. We haven't received the update on what our cost per pupil will be. We think it may drop a little bit more. I'm not sure what that little bit more may be. So, it was a good preliminary report card. Again, I'll emphasize preliminary. When the finals come out, for sure, we'll probably have, well, I know we'll have another banner put on the wall. All right? Any questions about the report card data that we have provided you there?
Can you provide us with a list of state comparable districts with their performance index and their cost per pupil?
Are you talking about our similar districts?
Our similar states?
Yes.
Because I did it for the central Ohio districts.
Okay. I'll be glad to bring that back in November on the superintendent's report with those similar districts. And I think everyone's aware, but those would be those 20 districts that are most like us. So, you want our student achievement and cost per pupil?
And cost per pupil.
Okay.
And when will the CUP be out?
The CUP report won't be out until probably February, March.
Soon, you'll have 11.
Unless she might be able to... We might be able to get the cost per pupil period-age reporting, which just opened up, so it takes there, you're allowed to report for a couple of weeks. Once that closes, the state should put those dollars up in the interactive local report card, they just aren't there yet. So, we might have them by then.
Can we add in the cost of debt, or debt service? I don't know how you calculate the total amount.
They don't calculate, the state doesn't.
I mean, us, if we're comparing districts.
What, like, total debt?
What, I mean, putting it into the cost per pupil for the calculation?
Well, that's a separate issue altogether. We can't compare the other districts, I mean, we continue to build school buildings.
Buildings, and they're selling their buildings off.
Right, exactly. It's just no, there's no comparison there. It's a separate, that's why it's a bond and not a level.
It's still debt, but it's still a cost.
It's still debt, but because we have so many of those, it is a big number, of course, as a result. But I think it's worth repeating that in the workshop that we had recently, especially since we unfortunately didn't have any public attendance. You had mentioned a few minutes ago about not resting on our laurels. Mr. Fede gave a great report on the continuing education efforts that are being conducted by Olentangie for our teachers.
Sure.
It's a very thorough, very aggressive program, and it speaks to just that issue, continue to exceed, moving forward with how we meet our mission.
Well, I think, and you're right, that's our OPDA classes, our professional development. We really hone in on that value-added measure, because for districts that are high-achieving, it would be very, I'm not going to say very easy, but easier to say, okay, we're high-achieving, here's the test, take the test. We want to push those kids so that they are getting more than one year's worth of growth every year they attend the Olentangie local schools. And some of those will come out in in-course exams, some of those will come out in OGT, some of those will come out in the Ohio Achiever assessment. But I think we continue to pinpoint that and say, how can we push our kids higher and further? And that 107.3, I believe, the highest performance index in the state's 112 this year. It was 111.8 last year. That's where we want to be, obviously. The best you can get's 120. No one has that, but I guess in the, in utopia, you'd like to be at 120, which means that everyone's scoring at the advanced level. So, we will continue to push toward that, but we also know that we will continue to grow, which brings other challenges to us, both good and bad. Also, along with the good things, Olentangie has earned the gold-level fit-friendly status from the American Heart Association. We kind of, you know, we have the American Heart Association here every year, and we have kids participating, and this year, we kind of found out that they'd also offer an award for a fit-friendly worksite, and things taken into account are providing walking routes, promoting walking programs, online newsletters, tracking tools to motivate employees. So, that's part of that wellness piece, when we talk about our insurance plan, how it changes, and does it become consumer-driven, and do we have a wellness piece to it? We've always gone, started down that road, and that allowed us to earn the gold-level fit-friendly status from the American Heart Association. I believe platinum's the top. That's where we want to be next year, so we'll continue to work toward that in regard to our wellness program. Some of you may be aware, or may have participated in our parent programs, team forum. We're having one, it's Drug Awareness and Identification, on Wednesday, November 7th, 7:00, Liberty Middle School. Good thing takes place. I believe we do this every year, and I would highly encourage any parent out there to take advantage of these parent program team forums. We had a community forum on diversity. The video is available on our website. Dr. Melanie Killen did just a fantastic job. We had approximately 120, 100 to 120 individuals there. It was a very good night. As you know, we've been working extremely hard through our diversity committee in regard to offering those types of programs, and we've received a lot of compliments in regard to our community forum. That was one of two forums that we will hold this year. Of course, our next one sometime in the spring. I want to also, we had parent praise for Jill Bauer and Indian Springs Elementary School Food Service Team for creating gluten-free options for students. I know we've talked many times at this, at these board meetings, about what are we doing in our cafeterias to be healthier and helping our students, and this is one of the things that came through this week, offering, we're now offering gluten-free options for students at Indian Springs. I don't know if you're familiar with this, if you've had individuals attend Liberty High School, you'll know History vs. Hollywood at Liberty High School. What you're seeing there in those pictures are students that line up or sometimes spend the night. And I believe, Stacy, I know your daughter and your son are going through this, History vs. Hollywood.
Yeah, I drive them at 2:30 in the morning.
Yes. It's just that, as you can see, individuals are in the hallway there, they're waiting to get their movie. Students start lining up at 5:00 a.m., top three movies drawn, Miracle, Saving Private Ryan, Godfather. It's basically a research project to see, okay, how close did the movie portray real history? And the reason they line up is the fact they want to get better movies that would make the research, I'm not going to say easier, but maybe more interesting, depending on what you get. So, that is a great night every year for our students, and, again, very seldom do you have 60 students lining up anywhere...
I am getting to school.
...to say, I want to get my work so I can get to start on my research. Very seldom, that means a lot of good things taking place in that classroom when they start lining up to get to school.
My son did Bridge Over the River Kwai, and we kept saying to him, no one else is going to pick that movie. You don't have to go at 2:30 in the morning. He's like, yes, I do. And we picked up all his friends, and he did it, and, I mean, one of the best nights is when they demonstrate these, and I know we're all invited to that.
Yes, that's in the spring.
Yes, in the spring. It's one of the best nights when they all present on their movies, and they're in costume, and they have food from whatever period, and they do some of the most elaborate reporting I've ever seen, and that's probably one of my favorite events as a board member and as a parent.
And I'm glad you brought that up. I don't know the specific date, and I know I've been there. I'm going to highly encourage all of you to go, because, once again, as Stacy said, so much creativity and so much effort put into that research project. It's quite a night, and it's quite a night, and it is the end of the event, as they say. Here's the start, I believe in April I'll be talking about, here's the end. Race to the Top, as you know, we try to give updates every month. We were awarded a Manning Grant of $110,000. The ironic thing about that is, if you recall, when we first got into Race to the Top, the entire grant was 120 or so, roughly $40,000 a year. We did receive a Manning Grant for 110. Those funds will be used to offset the cost of third-grade extended testing for 12, 13, 13, 14. We were one of 13 districts to receive this award, so we were very pleased to get that, obviously, because we don't think we got nearly enough first time around. Again, 110, we like to have it be in the millions, but we will take what we can get because, you know, and these add up to dollars that add up to hundreds and thousands of dollars.
That's for one year, or is that for three?
That is, actually, we will be considering that over a two-year period. So, it's 110 total. And the other thing that I want to talk a little bit to you about, it's not really Race to the Top, and it is Race to the Top due to the fact that, if you recall, our initial proposal for Race to the Top included a teacher performance pay program. We are currently involved in a teacher performance pay program with ESC, Runningsburg, and Olentangie. We have approximately 20 teachers interested. Here's, here are the pros, here are the cons. The pros would be the fact that our recent value-added reports that came out, I'll take Olentangie High School, for example, 60% of the teachers... The pros would be the fact that our recent value-added reports that came out, I'll take Oland Tangi High School, for example, 60% of the teachers were rated the highest. And if we were part of a performance pay program across the district, what we do know by the performance of our students and the efforts of our staff is the fact that it's going to cost a lot of money, a lot of money. And that's, that's a pro in regard to what type of job our staff would be going. The con to that, of course, is how do you maintain those costs on a financial standpoint? And I've heard a lot of people talk about should be merit pay, should be performance pay, hands down across the board. Well, there are a lot of unintended consequences that go along with that in a high achieving district. And one of them would be it costs a lot of money, a lot of money. And I think I told our teachers all along, if you've been lining up for a pay-for-performance program, you should because you're going to make money because you're doing a great job, because the facts show that you're doing a great job. So that's the pro. The con, of course, would be the fact that the, the money may get scarce. So again, we are part of that pilot, we're part of that pilot, and we'll keep the board informed as we go along in regard to that pilot. Agenda items, bless Mike Cullen, he's been here for a while, and we're going to hear from him this evening. He, he's a member of the State Board of Education, we're going to have an update there. We're going to hear from a web-based internet television station right now. I believe he's stuck in traffic on 23. We're hoping that he can get here, and if he can't, we'll kind of juggle the, the whole piece. Board policies, I've said it before, I'll say it again, there has been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears involved in this whole board policy piece. We can't say enough about Linda Martin, Dave King, our community volunteers, the times they have spent morning after morning, 18 months now, going through our board policies and bringing them up to date. I think we're just about there, right? This is it, we're just about there. Five-year financial forecast is on the agenda for approval. Pam Botman is covering lead in our curriculum department, that's on your agenda. As you recall, Pam was with us for many years in the curriculum department, and she's going to be covering for a lead. And, you know, it feels really good to be able to say, hey, let's bring Pam back and cover this for 30 days. We'll be in great hands. And last but not least, we're asking for an additional stipend for this year for Jeff Gordon, who's performing the additional duties of Mr. Turb, who, who left us. And we're asking for additional dollars for Jeff Gordon. We also see our food service permanent hires. I don't want you to think that we went on a spending binge and hired like 10 new food service people. These individuals started the year substitute teachers, I'm sorry, substitute workers in the food service department, and now we are hiring them on a permanent basis. We have overnight out-of-state trips to accrue, of which we have many. We have the Liberty Corridor Project, that's the locker project that allows us to accommodate as many as 2,000 students in Liberty High School. We are establishing a diversity club at Berkshire Middle School, and we are having improvements to the Oland Tangi High School softball field funded by the softball boosters. And again, Becky has mentioned this, the number of donations that come through every year. Last but not least, I have to share this email with you because we always talk about good things with teachers and good things with, like transportation. Here's one that I, Dave Forn, he sent me this, and I thought, now this proves that we are efficient and high-performing in all areas. This is a, an experiment done in one of our, our schools, actually, it's with Tyler Runt. And this student's mom is a research scientist at Ohio State, and she volunteered to come in during the scientific inquiry unit to do a germ experiment with us. And it says, we took cultures from around the room, each student decided what to swab, and then they went into the incubators to grow bacteria. It says, you'd be happy to know that we had cultures for our floor, our trash can, our tables, our carpet, door knobs, computer keyboard. Floor, carpet, trash can, tables had very little bacteria growth. Trash cans had between four and seven bacteria growing in the culture, and the tables had 10, our windows had 2. Doctor was so impressed with the cleanliness of our room, you can be assured the rest of the school is just as clean and germ-free. Says, thanks for all you do to keep our buildings very clean. We have scientific research that says we're clean. So that's a good, and we appreciate that. Questions?
I just might add that, getting back to the, the business with the merit pay, whatever you want to call it. Ms. Martin and I are going to attend a conference at the, I think it's October 30th.
Yes.
Sometime fairly soon, but we're going to go to that.
I believe Becky and I are going to that, too.
Oh, is it, no, aren't you going?
That's next, we have.
Oh.
Yeah, she's going, we saw her up.
She's not going, okay. But we are, some of us are going to go to that.
That is correct.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you so much.
And Ms. Jenkins?
I have nothing at this time.
All righty, then we have public participation, number one, for general comments. And if you would please give them the parameters.
We have 30 minutes for public participation session number one. Each participant has five minutes. Please state your name and address when you're called to the podium.
And Ms. Foreman, Nancy Foreman, if you'd join us, please. And please go to the podium, we can record.
Your name and address.
Nancy Foreman, 731 Berkeley Road, Central Ohio, 43074. And basically, my question is, now that dyslexia has been now a disability within the government, right, so state of Ohio, and it's now a lot of responsibility falls back up at schools. Does the district have any plans on how to handle these students? Could you help dyslexia, and what can we do about them? Elementary school seems to be okay, but when you get to middle schools and high schools, right now, we don't have that support. So I was curious to see how you guys are going to handle this between now and just for the kids who have a disability, but now it's an mandated law that a school is going to have to take this extra burden. And I know money's tight, and we're growing, as you said. So I was wondering if you have anything in the works or anything to that.
Do you want to make a clarifying statement?
Do you want to talk about the reason? I want to address, I want to address your, your statement, but since we're in public participation, does it matter?
Well, it's just not supposed to be a dialogue back and forth, which again is one reason why we created the session we had at 6 o'clock. So clearly, somebody will follow up with you.
Yes, technically speaking, we, we will continue to address all issues of our special needs students. And I would highly encourage you to continue to come forward, come talk calmly. And now, I could, that can be a long conversation between you and I and Chris Andres, who works with our middle school, high school, special needs students, and we will address those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Mr. Salmon, Carl Salmon, please.
Carl Salmon, 2135 Sherborn Lane, how? Let me just, before I start, suggest to the board that you can change the format of these meetings and have that sort of exchange with people like the woman that just spoke, if you want to. And I have long argued that in the interest of transparency, this board should have exchanges with people like the woman that just met up and spoke and be able to respond. It's your rules that prevent that, so I don't want her to be misinformed. The board has chosen this format, which I don't think is in the interest of transparency. Now, I do want to just make a couple of comments, again, about the TURF issue. And I know that Kevin made the statement, I think, in September, that the project was on hold because the funding was not forthcoming, or at least at this point, it hadn't. I don't know where that stands, we haven't heard an update. I just, again, want to express some concerns, and I also want to raise a legal issue tonight, which I want to suggest you review with your legal counsel, if in fact this thing ever goes forward. We remain, and I say we, a number of folks, including myself, I think Tracy's here, remain concerned about the replacement cost being a burden to the school district. And this subject was brought up at at least one or two development committee meetings. That's our concern. If you can guarantee that there's going to be no cost to replace the thing in 10 years, I got no problem with it. But I know you have, can't make that, that guarantee. Same thing with the maintenance. I'm concerned that what we're going to do, you know, this board has, there was an article in the paper about how, you know, this board says we can, we can extend to the next levy four years instead of three. I said in the last meeting, I think it can go further than that if this board would adopt proper cost controls and really have a, a robust program of looking for areas to do cost containment like we do in business. But the concern here with this project is the fact that it's going to end up being a burden to the district. Now, the legal issue I'm concerned about is if in fact this process goes forward. The question that I would have is whether such an agreement between the booster clubs and the district establishes a nexus between the two entities. And if so, what will the impact be in terms of liability exposure and requirement that the boosters come under the same audit requirements from the state of Ohio that the school district has? I think all of you probably saw the recent article that appeared about a month ago that the Attorney General is taking a much harder view of booster clubs and PTOs. And I think that scrutiny is only going to continue. And I submit to you that I think there's a real legitimate question as to whether, if you enter into this kind of an agreement with the booster clubs, whether or not that also then creates some other legal obligations. I don't practice law, I'm simply suggesting that you talk to your legal counsel and find it out, because I would hate, aside from the financial problems that, that a number of us have with this expenditure, if it goes forward. We certainly don't want to create a legal problem with a district that becomes an even bigger expense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Two, sir, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So one is, we're allowed to public comment, so we just, we spent 30 minutes earlier today trying to try different things, different structures, to see what works best, increase transparency, dialogue between the community and the board. So I think we'll continue to experiment, see how those go, and we can potentially revisit public comment. But right now, I think the board is making a big conscious effort to improve those opportunities. Two, nothing new on TURF, nothing new report. It is relative to the legal issue, until we have a proposal and a structure to react to, there's nothing really to run, to run TURF. So at the proper time, you know, should that issue come back, we'll take the proper steps through our diligence, which is, is issue compatible.
I'd like to make one clarifying comment also. The, it is correct, the state auditor is being more diligent in regard to booster clubs, PTO, summer camps. And we've already started that process from a school district standpoint, from an educational standpoint with, with our administration, and that will funnel right on down to the classroom, to the coaches. We've met with PTO presidents, we've met with all administrators, we have plans to meet with booster club presidents and, and make sure that they understand that entire process. There is a lot of money to flow, they raised a lot of money, and it is, there's nothing wrong with raising money, but it's critical that you understand the process. And that's exactly what we continue to work on with our entire organization.
As an additional clarifying comment, though, we have no authority over boosters or PTOs. So we can give them suggestions.
Right.
If they don't follow the rules that we put in place, the board can refuse to acknowledge them as a PTO or booster club.
Yes.
But other than that, we have no authority over those groups.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Thank you, Nancy. Ms. Ruge, Tracy Ruge, if you'd join us, please.
Tracy Ruge, 245 Oakham Court, how? You realize what you're doing here is dialogue, right? So there, the only problem with having actual dialogue and hiding it as classified statements is you, I mean, this is good, what you just did. You had three clarifying statements, you answered some of these questions, and you'll get back to them with regard to a more in-depth discussion. And there's nothing wrong with that. And the, there's only positive things that can come out of dialoguing with concerned taxpayers and parents and members of the community. And so I've been coming to meetings for almost five years, and the closed-door policy's really got to go. It's got to go, the token 30 minutes, of which I made the last 10 because I spent an hour and a half getting from campus up here, because I was stall and crawl from the 23 and 27 intersection. But you'll get more participation from the community, you have more sessions like that. There's, there's nothing but positive things that can come out. Your job can be easier, your relationships with the community can be a lot more positive and less in disagreement. Anyway, I'm, I'm going to reiterate some of the things I've said for the last four and a half years, budget cuts. I believe this board will make the levy last four years, because you have to, and you know, you're not going to pass a levy if you don't. So the publicity that's getting in the pa, that's in the paper all the time, the S and P's about making, you know, having committed about four years. I heard, before the 2011 levy, I heard, you know, dialogue from some members on this board that, yeah, we should try to make that levy last four years. But you didn't care. So you had another levy that wasn't needed quite yet, and it passed. But each time, the 2008 levy, the 2011 levy, they pass by less and less votes. So if you go for a levy in three years, it, it won't pass. People do not have the money. The unemployment rates are still high, they just don't. Everybody is, just their pocketbooks are drained. But I believe you can make this levy last even more, even longer than four years. But you have to tighten your belts. There are more significant budget cuts that need to be made. Busing, we rank 303 out of 611 in busing efficiency in the state of Ohio. Now, we have a large county, a large area, but you can look at bus routes. You can, I see so many empty buses around. I see buses for athletic events on the weekends go home empty. So you've not only paid a bus driver for seven or eight hours to sit in a parking lot, that bus goes home empty. And with gas prices, now luckily this week, they're 30 a gallon, but when they're close to $4, I mean, that's a significant saving. Look at bus routes. I have not heard anything about looking at bus route efficiencies. And high schools, I see a lot, I sat in a high school parking lot for 20 minutes and I just watched how many people got off buses. Very, I'd say, the, the fullest bus was about 60% full. Otherwise, I could count on two fingers, two hands, not two fingers, how many people got off a bus at the high school level. There's just so much, you could save a million dollars a year. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, and I'm using some previous district statistics on, on, on bus routing efficiency. You know, the contracts that you negotiated with the unions were better, but they're still not quite enough. The healthcare premiums and the benefit, healthcare benefits that the union members get are still higher than the private sector. So I would ask for renegotiation of that and make it more commensurate with the private sector.
Yep, one minute.
I would look at making OIA. I understand there are some pretty significant salaries for administrators of OIA, but yet their, their costs, their operational costs are low because they're not doing the maintenance on the fields, they're not paying for school buildings. I mean, nominal fees would, of, of usage fees to OIA would be better than anything. So I think you need to look at that relationship. I just implore you to take the 85% of the budget that is spent on salaries and benefits and, and things that aren't needed and cut that and make this levy last longer than four years, because people just don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would make one, one clarifying comment, and that's, that's only to invite the speaker in with myself and the Transportation Director. I'd be glad to meet with her, because there are a lot of variables involved in transportation. One of which, you know, oftentimes when you're following an empty bus, you need to determine just where that bus is on their bus route. That would be an example of one. And I'm, I'm not going to go on about the many variables involved, only to say, I would be glad to sit down with our Transportation Director and go over our bussing procedures and have that conversation.
That reminds me, just popped in my head, the, a good example would be the neighborhoods right next to the schools that are, you know, as close proximity that we have bussing for. How do we determine to give them bussing?
We have a law policy that.
Can't send up the neighborhood next to the schools, go to those schools.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying, that's an area you could look at, for your reduction.
I'll have to cross the border in the middle of my kid's.
So, let's send it, let's send it here, then.
When they can't cross. When they can't cross or draw.
We have that discussion.
All righty. Thank you all. We have four gen, sorry, discussion items, and Mr. Collins, State Board of Education update, if you'd join us, and thank you for your patience as well.
I don't know.
It's, we're past that.
Section number two, we're not going in.
If I can, I'm going to kind of turn this way so we can block more place. Thank you very much. Thanks for an opportunity to just share a few updates with you. And before I get to that, and I won't take long because all of us have been sitting a bit, I just want to say two things before we get into the actual report, if that's okay, just to keep. Number one is, as I conclude my first term on the State Board of Education as your representative and Representative of Delaware County, I just want to say thank you. It's been a marvelous experience. Hopefully, our service has equaled even part of what I've learned from you all. And so, it's been outstanding. I've certainly learned more than I've shared. And the other thing that's so heartwarming is to stand before a district like this and see your successors and your congratulations. I mean, the number of national merit award winners of this, in the district of this size is outstanding. The percentage is off the wall. The fact that I actually had a chance to stand before you three, three previous times with three of those excellent with distinction banners is an absolute treat. And all I can say is I've been redistricted and so have you. So, Delaware County has been completely moved, and so has Knox County, and it's been attached to two-thirds of Franklin County, and you're now in the new district since. So, as you got moved, as a ten-year resident of Delaware County, most appropriately, you all should thank my wife far more than you'll ever thank me because she's been your Director of Rehabilitation at Grady Hospital for the past fourteen years. I just want to say that I have chosen to continue my pursuit, and so I am running for reelection. This is not a campaign piece. I just tell you that I want to say thank you, and if you choose, I would love to continue to serve one more term because we also are state limited in terms of eight years. As I, as I share with you this, I want to tell you the other comparison. As you got moved as a county, you got moved out of a district that was sixteen counties big. And it went from Marion to Marietta to St. Clairsville, and it looked like somebody dropped Italy in the middle of southeastern Ohio, literally. It was a boot. And to have an opportunity to see some of the difficulties and some of the things, your work, just because you may be a little better off, isn't any less important, and it isn't less, and less significant. You have both on all sides, and I've had a chance to see this face to face. So, when I say congratulations to you, it's not just because of where you live and what your address is on, it's because good work succeeds in education regardless of the circumstances around it. So, again, be very proud, and again, thank you for this opportunity. Couple of quick things I want to share, I think many of you know, but just in case, I don't think your newspaper's a reporter. The report that came out from Auditor Yost yesterday on an update and the reason Lucas had to share with you, preliminary, well, in your case, you've been absolutely cleared by the examination process. So, before too long, regardless of what happens elsewhere, you won't have to use the word preliminary anymore. So, you can feel very good that this excellent distinction will stay. Secondly, I would like to say that some of the things that we're facing that are critically important and critically important to you, one is this whole issue of the third grade guarantee. And I will tell you that some of us are fighting like crazy to make sure that there's additional state support because you cannot do those things that are dictated in the third grade guarantee without additional support, and they can't come out of existing local dollar. You know, it's interesting, they followed, they followed a Florida model, but somehow invested a hundred and forty million in the first year and five hundred and fifty million in over the next three years, and nobody told us, nobody said that. So, there's nothing wrong with making sure that third grade is a pivotal point for examining and determining the youngsters who the third grade can read, but the fact of the matter, given those, given the requirements in the statutes that we as a state board cannot change, all we can do is give you rules and regs off the statutes. There needs to be additional supporting, and it cannot come out of your current treasury because otherwise, the things you talked about, ma'am, will only get more difficult. The next thing I want to talk about is that this whole issue of actually going forward from 2014 on, and it could, could or could not be in the new House Bill 555, which will be one more amendment in addition to the NBR that'll come forward in the lame duck section. It appears now that it's not as likely, and don't quote we, because it could be very likely tomorrow, but it appears that there's not enough consensus on the part of the two houses and the governor's office that this whole issue of a new report card and a structure will apparently take more time. I'm fortunate enough to be one of the, one of the three state board members that sits with this consortium that's been put together that includes the governor's office, Senator Lay, Senator Lehner on the House, on the Senate Education side, the House Education side, and representatives of the department. And we spent three hours the other day, and the next meeting is November ninth, this is not going to be an easy task. The fact of the matter is, it's not a question that anybody's asking about reporting based on the, on the areas in which reporting needs to be done. The question is, what's the dashboard that'll make up the evaluation process? And can you really only do an A, B, C, D, and F report card without any other considerations that gives you true indication of what you district does, how it does, and where it stands in relationship to others? And so, hopefully, there'll be an examination that actually brings in the full understanding of public schools and public education and what you do along the, along the same line as saying, we still need to measure progress of students and teachers and school districts and how they do. So, it's an effort to be as transparent as possible, and right now, this current potential legislation does not do that because it will technically mask the actual effort and the performance of youngsters within a A to F system without any actual dashboard particular. So, we're hoping to bring that forward to you. There is no easy fix in this, ladies and gentlemen. And the only other thing I want to suggest is, as you go forward into the next, into the next calendar year, in the middle of your school year, we need to follow this budget development and the new budget very, very carefully. What I hear you talk about here and what I hear boards talk about every single time is a reflection of one significant difference. And that is, right now, the state of Ohio as a state does not accept its full responsibility for the actual funding of public schools, and it puts undue burden on local school districts and property tax authorities. Until we get together and make that voice common, you will not only see the difficulties you face, you will actually endure the largest tax increases in the history of Ohio. If they'd have increased my taxes five percent a year, a five percent increase over the last five years, I would have paid less than I had to pay in local issues by a five to one ratio, and you are no different than anybody else. And this is what we really need to understand. You can't do this at the state level and say, you take care of it at the local level and really believe that people aren't going to pay more money.
So, do you propose lowering taxes locally to replace the state funding?
Absolutely. And it's, and that's really what DeRaul talked about in 1991. It really hasn't changed, it's just ended up fixed.
How do you plan on doing that?
I think there are a number of us that really have some ideas about what we want. Honestly, we need ears that listen and that want to hear. How high is your priority that education ranks in the state? What used to be number one is now, education now ranks third or fourth in the state of Ohio in terms of percentage of budget that funds public education. In the last Miami, and they cut public schools by 1.3 billion dollars. You can't do that and not expect that you are going to be asked to carry a burden that's unfair to you. And there is, I'd say this, the treasury can absorb it depending upon the priority we give it. I can't give it that voice, only you can give it that voice. I'm one voice who sits, who's only identified as a state board member. You are citizens who have legislators, and they actually listen to you. So, this responsibility of sharing this message rests with all of us.
Is there a place we can go to look up the strategies for reducing our local taxes?
As soon as we figure out what the state level's going to be. And that you have to have that conversation with the legislator, not me.
So, I mean, well, if you're proposing that we replace the taxes, I just, I'm very critical of that. I doubt that we would lower the taxes locally and at the same time, you know, increase the state. I would probably say a hundred percent that they would just both alike. So, I mean, that's why I'm asking for strategies. Are you proposing?
I'm happy to talk to you about that subtly, I'm sorry, but I think people might doubt. I'm on the state board website, and I have an email address, and I have a cell phone, and I answer both very quickly.
Okay, I'm just saying that because you proposed us to get together to increase taxes in the state, but I don't hear any strategies for us to get together to decrease it locally.
Okay. Happy to have you.
Okay.
So, that's where we stand. I think the thing I want to say most of all, whether it's me or someone else that continues for the next four years, I urge you to do as much dialogue and communication. I'm very fortunate here that I have an opportunity to talk to Superintendent Smith regularly, or he has an opportunity to put up with me when I ask him a question. But in all candor, we're only as good as you make us. We're only as effective as your representative as you bring issues, such as your question, Mr. Lay. And I, those things need to continue to come forward, and those dialogues need to continue so that we're not going to spend all this time arguing whether this issue's going to last three years, four years, or five years. But if there's a threshold, then you're excellent with distinction. For under nine and five hundred dollars a student, I don't know of a better bank in the park than the state of Ohio. And if you can find one, please show it to me. So, I think what we need to do is figure out what those balances are and bring a common void. Because keep in mind, the state board is not set budget. It's recommended by the governor and it's approved by the state legislature. We have no budget control order. So, we need your help, Mr. and Mrs. President. Again, I don't want to take much longer, I just want to say congratulations many, many times for many things that you did. As a former member of the Westerville Board, I'll still be upset about some guy named Meyer and some guy named Grayson, and Mr. Schrick will be fine. Put your hands down. Seriously, thank you very, very much. It's been a pleasure, I thank you for your time, and all you've done for this community.
Mr. Collins, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Did, has Mr. Smith been able to do?
Yes, he is.
If you please join us, we'll have a presentation on Internet television station for PAL by Ron Smith with SOH Productions.
Take one of each of the classes. Well, good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Lucas, and members of the community. My name is Ron Smith, and I have some exciting news to share with all of you in attendance tonight. And we are very excited to introduce that the Olentangie area will be getting its very own television station called Olentangie TV. And Olentangie TV is a vision of what's called City Vision. And City Vision is a product created by our organization called SOH Productions. We've been in business for twenty-four years as a complete multimedia production company based in Gehanna, Ohio. And over the course of that time, we have become nationally recognized for our audio and video production work. And this project began about five years ago in 2007 as a way that we as a organization could get back to our home community in Gehanna by giving them their own cable community station. Well, what we found out in trying to create a community cable station is the fact that we have three cable companies and a phone company who thinks they're a cable company that offer service to the local area. And then our state senate passed Senate Bill 117, which no longer requires cable companies to make room for local cable community stations. So, we thought, okay, what's next? Well, at that time, the internet was continuing to evolve and develop to a point where we learned that internet television is the next generation of where TV is going, and this is what's called intercasting, which is programming specifically for your community and what's happening in your community. So, the mission statement behind what we're talking about tonight is to provide the residents of the area of Olentangie with an informational and educational resource to turn to for the latest information about and for what's going on in the community. The purpose behind the station is to be an innovative online resource to showcase what actually makes the area great. We had the opportunity to sit down and talk with Dr. Lucas about the program, and that's why we're before you tonight, because he saw the vision of how this could be an excellent communications tool on how the district could communicate what's going on with the schools with the residents of the area. And let me preface all of this by saying, there is no financial investment required by the school district at all to be involved with this. We come to you to be one of the channels of programming to be available to be watched within the Olentangie area. So, let me give you an example of Gehanna TV, which is currently on the air. It's been on the air for almost a year. We signed on the air on 11/4/11. And in Gehanna, there are six channels of programming. There's a city channel, a convention and visitors' beer channel, a chamber channel, a school channel for the Gehanna Jefferson Schools, a ministerial association channel, and a community channel. In Olentangie, we've arrived at four channels of community programming. There will be one for the city, there will be one for the Olentangie Youth Athletic Association. We just actually came from a meeting, sitting in, in traffic on 23. Thank you for your understanding tonight. We just came from a meeting with the OIAA board, and they are expressing an interest in having a channel on the station. There will also be what's called a faith channel as opposed to a Gehanna church channel. It'll be called a faith channel that will bring different churches in the area and the programs that they offer to the community to like, and then there will be a community channel. The way the station is managed is through what's called a programming committee. If you were to have a public access station, for instance, on Time Warner Cable, there's the famous Channel 21, which is public access, and you have to let everybody and their brother on regardless of content. The second level of what you can have is what's called a cable community station. I touched on that briefly. But with a cable community station, you have to have what's called a cable commission that approves all programming that is to be produced for that station. If you have an FCC station like 4610 or 28, you could put whatever you want on there because you control the content. Our government at this time has not regulated internet television. Well, we still felt from a company's standpoint, we needed to have that level of accountability. So, the programming committee is actually made up of representatives of each of the organizations that have channels on the station that meet on a monthly basis to approve, disapprove, and review all programming ideas for the particular station. They meet for one hour a month, we moderate the meetings. It's a democracy where if organizations have an idea of a show that they want to have produced to be aired on the channel, it's brought out, it's discussed, and it's discussed how that show will look to the public, whether or not it's relevant, whether or not it's approved. An example given, we were approached by Nancy Garland, state representative, to have the Nancy Garland Show. The programming committee said, hmm, that's political, think not. Well, I want to talk about my legislation that are actually with texting while driving. Great. We have six on-camera anchors. We will be glad to have one of them host the show talking about things affecting the local community and residents, including texting while driving. With us is our guest, Nancy Garland. Nancy, share with us a little bit about how texting and driving is currently affecting our residents, and we'll have Nancy on as a guest. Once she leaves office, she's more than happy to have the Nancy Garland Show. But until that time, that's what the programming committee decided on how to handle that particular situation. So, that's how the programming committee works. We ask for each organization that has a channel to come with two new ideas every month to the programming committee of what they want to have shot for the coming month. So, that way, the content is always constantly changing and always is fresh. The information is out there for at least a year. It could be shorter or longer depending on your choice. If there's something that's time sensitive and you only want it out there for a month, that's fine. If you want it out there for longer, we can do that as well. But we want to have people be able to access it for a long period of time. The other neat thing is, you can subscribe for free. We give you the opportunity to sign in with your name and your email address, and no, we don't fill your email address, but we want to know how you want to improve the station and what programming ideas you have, and also to alert you when there's something new added to the channel. If you take a look, you'll see this spreadsheet called the program guide. We can't call it a TV guide because that's a registered trademark, but there's a program guide you see there of all the shows that we currently have on Gehanna TV. Now, the neat thing is, you can subscribe to Gehanna TV or any of the channels we currently have on the air and receive an email update when there's something added new to the channel you want to follow or the entire station. Let's say you have kids in the school district, and you want to know when there's something new added to the school channel. It'll alert you. Or if you want to learn when something's new added to the entire station, it'll alert you. You can watch this anywhere you can get the internet. So, you can watch it on iPhone in the airport in Nashville to catch your daughter's game in case you missed it. And you're a basketball parent, and you want to watch the Olentangie game, you sit in the Nashville airport, watch it on your iPod. You can watch it on your iPad. You can watch it on your iPhone. Or if you have internet-ready televisions in your home or smart TVs, you can watch it at home through your Xbox or your Wi- it at home through your Xbox or your Wii. So anywhere you can access the Internet, you can see this. A great example of this is last week, we had the opportunity for Grove City TV to do the marching band showcase. They bring their four local high schools together for a marching band showcase where they perform their championship, uh, competition routines. We interviewed some of the parents that were there before the event to find out why they came out. One of them said, because my 16-year-old daughter's performing and we surprised her by flying her grandparents in from Phoenix. And the grandfather asked me afterwards, well, where can I see this? I said, well, when you go back to Phoenix, you can log on to GroveCityTV.com and you can watch the school channel from Phoenix, Arizona. So if there are school events, then we report that whether it be a relative or friends across the country that can't make it to see it, the cool thing is, they can go to Olentangie TV, click on the school channel, and watch it. So it's an opportunity to provide education and information about what's going on within your district to the residents of the district and to have that communication mechanism at your fingertips where you get to let us know what you want to share. And it's your call. It's your channel. You get to design it. We'll, we'll take care of hosting it and putting it out there. All we ask is that you let the residents of your district know that the channel exists and that the programming's out there for them to watch, whether it be through a newsletter or an article in the newsletter, however you want to do it. We have the opportunity to shoot the Vice President, videotape the Vice President. That was kind of slow there for you. He came to Gehanna Schools in January. We got approved through the White House to cover it. We were there right in between CBS and Fox to shoot him. And we had it out there within two hours of the speech, and only seniors. And the parents that were approved through Secret Service were allowed to attend the event. The rest of the school couldn't be there. The rest of the community couldn't be there. But the superintendent was nice enough to send out an email to the entire district to let them know that the 34-minute presentation, which had nothing politically going into it at all, which was really nice, but the presentation was on Gehanna TV on the school channel. We had 950 residents within two hours of the speech watching. And that's how powerful and timely this can be for you. So that gives you a feel for how it comes together. The way we support doing the production, because we don't charge you to have a channel, is by selling what we call community partnerships, where we go to local businesses who would like to have their 15-second commercial about their local business seen before you watch one of the stories. So to give you an example, next slide, we have what's called the bum-bum-bum community founder. They can choose to have their ad seen before any video on any channel. Now, as an example, Survivor's one of my favorite shows, I'll confess. I can't watch it on Wednesday nights just through a small group in church. So on Saturday mornings with my Fruit Loops and my Grape Nuts and my wife, we watch Survivor on Saturday mornings. But before I can watch Survivor, I have to watch a 30-second swap commercial. At any rate, you get the point. What we'll do is we'll sell what's called pre-roll ad about a local area business that will be seen before you watch any of the shows on any channel. That's a community founder. The second one is a community champion, where they sponsor a specific channel. Let's say as an example, in Gehanna, we have the Pine Box Agency. Yes, that's actually the name of a company there, a funeral home. They sponsor the church channel. And, you guys are a hard room. I'm trying to keep a light after we do a meeting. I do sit down and talk to comedy, by the way. The idea of the church channel, they only sponsor that particular channel. So perhaps Second Soul or Embroidery that does spirit wear for the Olentangie District wants to sponsor specifically just the school channel. We'll come to you and say, this business is to express an interest in sponsoring your channel. Do you approve or disapprove of the sponsorship? Because we know as a district, there are certain organizations that you can or can't have as sponsors of your channel. So we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to review and approve if there's a business that has approached us to be the sponsor for your channel. The third one is a community leader, where they sponsor a specific ongoing program. We were actually approached by BW3s to do an athlete of the week show. They would like to sponsor that, but they only want to sponsor that show. So the only time you would see their ad is before that show versus all the shows on that channel or the entire station. So that is a community leader. The final is a community supporter, where they sponsor just a single event, say a Fourth of July parade, a tree lighting. We did a two-hour Fourth of July parade in Westerville for Westerville TV this year in 105 degree heat. 155 participants. It took two hours. Conversely, we just did the Whitestone High School homecoming. It took 11 minutes and 42 seconds. So it was a little shorter than a parade. But that is a community supporter program. To give you an example of where online video is going, Cisco has actually said that by the end of 2013, 90% of what's on the Internet will be online video. This is how long and how many times people actually watch online videos right now. On a, several times a week or several times a month basis, it's almost half of the people that take a look at the Internet right now. Matter of fact, with YouTube, they're getting 48 hours of content new every minute. That's how popular online video has become. Second, if you take a look at how much is actually currently being spent on online video, it's now up to $1.5 billion. This is where traditional advertising is moving. And finally, we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to properly manage the station and market the station appropriately. So we ask each organization that we work with simply to let people know that the channel exists, and this is a place where you can find out about what's going on with our particular organization. So at this point, I would welcome the opportunity to, if with your permission, Mr. President, answer any questions that you might have about it. I apologize if I ran over, but it's an exciting time for us in the area. And the other page you have there is the rollout of the 22 communities that we're working with. Gehanna, Clintonville, Westerville, and Grove City currently on the air. Pickerington, Westerville, Reynoldsburg, and Hilliard coming online by December 1st. And there you see there, Olentangie TV. We've identified the channels. What we're now trying to work with is to make sure that those channels are on board with us so we can start into production for a January launch of Olentangie TV.
Questions, comments? And I'd be interested to hear from Karen if you have something you'd like to add to.
My, my question would be around, I mean, Olentangie is made up of the city of Powell, many townships, and, and so when you say you have a city channel, there's, I can't even, I should know all those things, and how many?
The city of.
Yeah, what's, there's no city of Olentangie, but yet Powell's listed here. We have Delaware people. We have Clinton Township, Berkshire. I can't name them all. So how, how would you handle something like that? Because Olentangie, the district, is what binds all those communities together, but.
Well, that's why we decided to call it Olentangie TV. Powell TV should actually not be on here. Handout. I apologize that it's still there. That was administrative error on our end. We felt, and after a meeting with Dr. Lucas, he gave some great input on this, that to be all-inclusive, we felt we needed to call it the Olentangie TV, so it includes all. To give you an example with Clintonville TV, Clintonville technically is a part of Columbus. We're also doing stations for the short north, Grandview, and German Village. So they're all part of Columbus, but yet we'll have their own individual area. So we are more than open, if you have contacts at the townships. To give you an example, in Pickerington, we're working with Violet Township, and they have their own channel. In New Albany, we're working with Plain Township, as well as now New Albany's officially a city. They crossed over that 20,000 mark. They're no longer a village. So we will actually have a city channel and a Plain Township channel for New Albany TV. So if you have contacts with the townships, we would be more than happy to open discussion so that they have an opportunity to have a channel on Olentangie TV. We want to have a minimum of four and at most eight channels of programming available for a particular area. So we still have plenty of time for discussion to open it up to the township, for them to provide information about what's going on at the township government level. What they did in Clintonville is they actually had a government channel so that we could actually convey that, convey that information all-inclusive in one area by, because it would be hard for the townships to come up with new content every month, but by having a government channel, we can put them all under that umbrella.
Yeah, I guess that's the, the terminology when you said city channel. It's like, we don't, we don't really have just one or something.
Other questions?
Is, is this the only economic model in consideration for how this is structured? So for example, what clicked in my mind was, in essence, the site is, our participation site is free. You get paid for the advertising. Really, we're going to drive eyeballs for the advertising? Do you charge more for advertising? Is there any kind of different economic model in consideration? Where to the extent that we're driving people to the site, it's going to drive your revenue higher, that, that would be directly.
Suggestions that have been made in different areas for revenue share is also an opportunity available. If you'd like to see a proposal on that.
Do you want to see something? Thank you, sir, very much.
You're welcome.
Are you looking for, actually, I should ask this question.
Yeah.
Are you looking for something from the Board this evening? Move, and I would like to hear from Karen, too, if you have something you'd like to add to the conversation.
Just generally, I think we always struggle to get all of the good news from our schools out there. And I think any partnership we work in that will allow us to give a little bit more of that news and people's eyes is a good, especially if it's possible.
One of the things that we heard, if I may, from Superintendent Grove City, which was interesting, and he said, now, let me see if I understand this correctly. If I have a levy that's pending and I send out a press release for 4610 and 28 to cover it, they're going to take my press release and come out and interview every neighbor who's against us. If I understand you correctly, since this is a school channel, I can actually have what I want to say about the district, the way I would like to share with the public, so that they hear what we want them to understand about what's going on in the area versus their opinion? I said, absolutely. And they said, well, this is great, because now we have the opportunity to actually go into detail about the facts and information we want to convey. And we have the opportunity to make sure that that's the communication that we want to have with our residents versus through a third party. And that's the cool thing. We are your multimedia channel to help educate the residents about everything that's happening within the area. And we can help create it to share that great information about what's going on, whether it be registering for new programs or doing background stories of the National Emerit finalists and their stories. I mean, it's just a great way to have what we call human interest stories about what's going on in the area.
So would it be fair to say that there's a consensus here that continue to have the dialogue and pursue this with Karen and Dr. Lucas?
Yeah, I'd need some structure.
Oh, certainly. Continue a discussion? Okay.
Thank you for your talk.
Give you some direction? All right, I'm seeing a discussion. It's the second reading of the Board Policy Updates, 7,000 and some miscellaneous that Ms. Martin will present.
Thank you. I made some changes from our last discussion of the 7,000s and miscellaneous. I'm going to go over those briefly and give everybody a picture that you have that accurate information. There are six policies that, that I devised slightly based on the discussion. And the first one is an essential change. It's just changing facility to plural facilities in policy 7250-01. The next one is 7440 policy on the second page. Shall report immediately. I put down tax in reference to any kind of a situation regarding violence or damage done to any of the buildings. The superintendent reports to the Board. Shall report any initial available information regarding such incidents, because as we noted before, you don't always have all the information immediately available. The policy change was changing the timeline or the time frame of recording data stored on video surveillance equipment. And I also included this, that the superintendent of the DSS shall conduct periodic review of surveillance electronic monitoring equipment. We shall recommend repair and replacement process funds become available. I think that's a critical statement because that means we will always pay attention to the monitoring equipment. It's nearly in that policy. The next policy refers to, I believe, the discussion focused on cellphone reimbursement. So instead of putting in specific cellphone reimbursement language, I said that if the Board so chooses to reimburse, that they will put that information of those reimbursements or stipends or however they look in the administrative guideline. And I would suggest that that would be a topic that you would want in a work session in your future to closely examine younger cellphones, how they are used, who uses them and the programs that are being used for those cellphones. The next one is a reference to an earlier policy, policy 3120. And this is one that we discussed when we were discussing your Board government's policies, that if a Board member so chooses to be a member, to be employed, considered appointed, they will do so after two years of stepping down from the Board. And then the last policy is one that Stacy discussed with the Board as far as the district being those idling restrictions. And if you notice the language, and we had quite a bit of conversation and transportation on this very short but critical policy, and the question circulated, and it was a good conversation that we noted at the work session. The current language states that idling restrictions are loading students and unloading in, obviously, bus loading zones. But what about loading and unloading students in all areas? And so we looked at that bus loading zone to say that we will pay attention to that idling in all areas where students are getting on and off the bus, football fields and practice fields and field trips. And so we think it's critical to watch that language in all places. Questions?
Stacy, I think that will remain in my mind forever, if I read the idling. For some reason, we were talking about it. But I only had.
I don't like cars to be idling anywhere.
Three suggestions. One was on the donations to schools. I already asked for them to be changed to shall, but I was just thinking about, we should put a restriction that the district cannot accept donations if the replacement, upkeep, or maintenance cost is paid for by a levy or a bond, to make sure that it's a real gift and it's not something that's going to require.
Which policy is that?
It is, it's paid, they strike it out 80/20, but I think it's part of, you know, 7230. It was 8020. It's page 8 of 152.
Thank you.
And my second one is on the Board-owned personal cellphones. I heard, I started to hear some other opinions last time. What were those?
She just said that we're going to discuss it at a specific, because there's more to it than just, um, what's the policy.
The policy is possible to, well, you know, the new deal, the actual implication of policy requires more discussion from the Board.
Of having Board-owned personal devices.
Do you have any, should they have, should, should they have, should they be mailed to employees, or should employees have personal use, with a stipend attached, or should a stipend even be considered? So before you actually say yes or no, I suggest that maybe bring implications, one of them first before you make that final decision.
And our next work session would be scheduled for January of '13, and we can certainly add that as an item.
One last one is in the, let's see, page 65 of 152, it's privacy issues. And it has in here, it's for PCDs and personal cellular devices. I think we should strike the first line of it where it allows it and keep it as prohibited from capturing and transmitting images and sounds from a PCD. I'm not, I'm not referring to like a video camera you would use for some recording instructions, but I mean the personal devices. I think we should, so there are no loopholes, just prohibit any employees or anybody else who are transmitting images and sound to other people.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. And Becky, the last item on the discussion item, second reading of the five-year financial forecast, please.
As you know, I presented that to the Board on October 9th, and I have had no changes made to the forecast, so that's a short presentation.
I'd like to read again, again, and I think it's worth repeating from our session that we had recently. Mike Tracy, who's the Chair of Finance and Audit Committee, was in attendance, and he read this memo supporting the review of the forecasts, and again, the fact that the Finance and Audit Committee did early vet that report. And I'll paraphrase from it. Becky Jenkins.
Becky Jenkins, Treasurer and Todd Johnson Assistant Treasurer, provided committee with details, including analysis of changes made since the last forecast. Becky provided a summary of the outcome and the latest union negotiations and how the impact the update. I reviewed details of the assumptions used to prepare the forecast, and the committee discussed various points for clarification. As Chair of the committee, uh, I can report that the committee believes the October 12 forecast update, as well as the assumptions used in the latest forecast, are reasonable. Committee also believes that the risk assessment included with the forecast update, while not required for the report, adds significant value for the reader to understand how the forecast could change in the future as the financial landscape changes for Olentangy School. Sincerely, Michael Tracy, Chair, Finance and Audit Committee. So, I thought it'd be worth repeating that. Any questions for Becky or comments? Okay, thank you. And we have public participation number two regarding action items. And Mr. Roman, Bob Roman, if you join us, please, and I think you know the drill here, right?
The, Bob Roman, excuse me, 1830 White's Court, Lewis Center, Ohio. Uh, before my comments, I did have two, uh, two, uh, previous, or, or comments that, during the other speaker's, uh, uh, dialogue that I'd like to say. One is, uh, on the bussings, uh, topic.
This session is for action items.
I can't talk about that one. Anybody else previously speaking?
Actually...
All right, action items, thank you. All right, so, as I'm looking through the policies that the board doesn't want to work on, I'm, I see for a $100 million business, I think there's a couple policies that are missing. And the first one, I think, is conflict of interest. I don't see an adequate conflict of interest policy for employees and board members. For example, employees, no, no, uh, employee that can indent the school district or, I'm sorry, negotiate on behalf of the school district should have a conflict, conflict of interest with a contractor, right? I mean, that's kind of standard in any business, right? Second is, uh, employees should not be allowed to receive compensation from, uh, nonprofit organizations associated with the school district. For example, PTOs, uh, or, you know, in the case of this year, where a booster organization repaid a debt, uh, on behalf of a school employee, you know, technically from an IRS standpoint, that is taxable income. So, that is income to that individual. If we had a conflict of interest policy for the employees, then those kind of things wouldn't have been allowed to happen. And how do we know that PTOs or boosters or any other, other nonprofit organizations of Ohio, a Olentangy Lily, aren't providing compensation to school employees? We, we just don't know. If we had a policy, then we know it couldn't happen or with termination. So, that's the first thing. Second thing is, in regards to board members, I, I don't see any conflict of interest policy set forth to prevent, uh, board members voting on issues or, or amendments, I'm looking for the right terminology here, where there is a clear conflict of interest. For example, where a board member may have a spouse that's an employee and voting on benefits of, or compensation of said spouse, that board member should have to recuse himself or herself from the vote, and there, it should be just a no vote, right? And there are, I'm sure, other, uh, cases where a board member may be a booster member and there's a, there's a vote on something booster-related. That's a conflict of interest. That, that vote shouldn't be allowed to count. So, I see, I see, uh, two areas where conflict of interest, board members and employees that need to be strengthened, again, for a $100 million enterprise. Second policy is I don't see anything in the, in the policy regarding any whistleblower protect, not protection, but policy, right? So, in the cases of fraud, for example, which we had earlier this year, uh, you know, technically, public companies have to have whistleblower protection, but nonprofits don't have to. But state and federal governments are suggesting that there be whistleblower protection. I think there should be an avenue of communication and dialogue with a ombudsman or a non, a nonpartisan, uh, entity in the school district, such as the legal counsel or the school board, where employees can feel free to, uh, have a conversation about fraud if they witness fraud somewhere in the, in the school district. That's it.
I just have a clarifying comment, um, in regards to board members voting. Actually, Ohio revised code dictates what, dictates what board members can and cannot vote on.
So, there is no conflict of interest required from the Ohio...
Yes, yeah. And it's the Ohio revised code, and I have a, a relative who is an employee of the district, and I am not allowed to act. I have to abstain from any of it.
But I've seen votes where you haven't abstained. And there's documented proof of that.
Not on the, not on family members. No, no.
Yeah, there, Carl, you've seen it too.
Absolutely.
Nope.
I mean, unless you change the records.
Nope.
Or change the audio.
Well, let's leave it at that. I, I don't believe that to be true either. I'll also point out to you, I don't remember the exact language. I'm going to revisit it myself, but under our governance policy for board members, I think it's 0120. I might have the 2-0 reversed, but there are at least two, if not three, points where it talks about conflict of interest for board members. Doesn't mean that the language couldn't be strengthened or expanded. I get that. I've made some notes here, and I'll get with Linda and we'll, we'll explore that. But I do know there are references of that for board members.
And we also have to, um, fill out every year, it's due by April the 15th.
Yes.
The form that's required by the state Ethics.
Ethics Commission.
By the Ethics Commission. And those are all public documents, and you can request those. Um, and you have to fill them out, um, honorably and, um, be truthful on them. So, you can pull them with the Ohio Ethics Commission, um, because that is something that every elected official has to file.
Thank you, Mr. Roman.
I'd also like to make one point of clarifying. I, I would suggest, uh, the speaker, uh, speak with, uh, Mr. Mark, or Mrs. Mark in regard to policies we do and do not have, because I believe we do address all of those concerns in our policies. And I would highly encourage the individual to meet, sit down, and go over those specific items.
Thank you. All right, board action items. We have three now, if you recall. I'll, um, I'm presenting for, uh, approval, A, B, and C. Remember, we added C. We have motion, please.
I think Mr. White asked that...
Oh, I'm sorry, you want to separate one?
Right, yeah, can you pull out C?
Pull out C? Okay, I'll present items A and B. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes. And I'll present item C, resolution to, uh, initiate termination. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please, Becky.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Treasurer action items.
Present Treasurer action items A through F for approval.
Can we pull out D?
D.
I'm sorry, what, what letter?
D. Dog.
Present Treasurer action items A, B, C, E, and F for approval.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Present Treasurer action item D for approval.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you, Becky. And Dr. Lucas Superintendent action item.
Present Superintendent action items A through G. Two, for approval, please.
Can we pull out three?
A through three.
Which one?
Oh, A three.
A three? Okay.
May I, actually, I have a question on this. We're hooked, I didn't...
Well, we can get to the question.
Is that the only one you wanted to pull?
In discussion.
Adam?
Yeah. Just that one?
All right. Present Superintendent action items A, 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, D through G. In other words, everything but A three.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion? Did you have a question here?
Yeah. Uh, it was on the, um, let's see, on G, with the softball field?
Yes.
Shouldn't that be under donations? We're given money for it, the fencing?
Uh, we have to approve the improvements.